Good. We're going to open up the meeting with a discussion of some of the fun, wonderful things that have been happening, and then we're going to go to specifics and honor some of our state award winners. So, over here in the, I don't want to call it the peanut gallery, that state winner gallery over there. So, all right. Does anybody have anything they want to share about what's happening? And Brian, you jump in here, too. Go ahead. Okay. You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The first one I want to talk about is Sarah Yu that is on the Commissioner of Education's Advisory Council. So, we're really happy that she's representing us. It's a statewide committee, and many kids and students all through the Commonwealth are going to be on it. So, we want to honor her, and we're really excited about that.
So, I know we're recognizing a lot of the state champions, so, but on the tennis side, we did, I think we had three on the girls' tennis team that made, played in state. So, there was a singles match on her Valentine that got made it to state, and then on the double side, Olivia Hoffman and Helen Hallbauer got played in doubles. So, it's very successful Tennessee's in there.
And I know softball also had a great season, especially with the pretty young team. There were some, a couple of seniors, I think, but a number of eighth graders even. So, that's a pretty bright future. They won region?
Won region.
Yes. So, and played in the first round of the state tournament. So, that's really cool.
It is. And then journalism had nineteen, they had awards, nineteen excellent and three superior. So, I think it's the most awards that our journalism department has gotten. They're doing a really good job. Okay. You want to add more?
Yeah, you know, a lot of energy to finish the school year here. Our entire track team was state runner-ups, and we're going to honor a couple of state champions here. Coach Leopold may speak a little bit about the full team effort, but what a really great representation there. I really think that last play in the softball regional final and just watching the excitement and enthusiasm on the field with a really bright future was a highlight of the year. And then probably my favorite photograph was Mr. Welch finishing the state championship run. I've got it on my desktop. You can say that because it is just, it is, it is just the joy in your face and the excitement of finishing a race. It was awesome. It represented Highlands super well. We're going to represent, are we going to recognize our Cappy winners tonight, too. So, we're excited about that in just a couple of minutes. And just want to say congratulations to the class of 2022. Our entire school community should be commended. And when I say school community, I mean the elementary schools, the middle school, and the parents and community members that have supported a group of kids all the way through some rough times, some great times, but really pulled together to, it's a community celebration. So, congratulations to the class of 2022.
Okay. So, Mr. Leopold, you want to come over, come up first and honor your track people? Bring them up, talk about them.
All right. I'm here today to congratulate Jake Welch and Ryland Pinkston on their individual state championships this year in track. They both helped get our team to back-to-back state runner-up. Two years ago, we finished three points behind. This year, we're a little bit further than that, but this year was a great team effort. A lot of guys returning for next year, but today, we're going to talk about these two guys here. I'll start with Jake in the 400. Tuesday of last week, unbeknownst to myself, because you know how they tend to keep things to themselves, he kind of hurt his quad a little bit, and then came to practice on Wednesday and talked about, and said how he was feeling it. And so, we pulled back, and we were just trying to get him to Friday. And so, he went through rehab, went through getting the process of just being able to run, and got to the meet on Friday. And really, the first event of the day is the 100-meter dash. And that's the one that is going to test you physically the most muscle-wise, because it's the most explosive. So, if I figured if he gets through that one, we'll be okay. And he got through the race, grabbed his quad. Mind you, he ran the second fastest time in school history in the 100 that day, grabbed his quad, finished. Where his parents, myself, were thinking, okay, well, he did great. He's probably done for the day, and we'll go from there. So, the 400 comes up, he decides I'm going to warm up, I'm going to see what, how it goes. So, he does. And he calls me on the phone 20 minutes before the race and says, "Coach Leopold, do you need to come over to me right now?"
Okay.
"What should I do?"
"I don't have the answer for you. Go over, get in the blocks. If you don't think you can go, don't. If you think you can give it a try, give it a try." He starts running. I mean, he honestly looked like he wasn't injured. He said it hurt terribly the entire time. Runs all the way around, gets to the last 100, he said, "I just didn't feel it anymore." Pushed past the kid, caught him from behind, ran past him. The picture you see, which is one of the coolest pictures you've ever seen, it's just pure joy, sticking his tongue out, flexing across, back-to-back state champion in the 400, and then runs the 200. And between these two guys are the reason why we're state runner-ups. They just, they help propel us to the, through the figurative finish line, per se. And I really appreciate the effort. It probably wasn't my greatest coaching moment, but you know, I, the effort was there. And if the guy, if the trainer said, "Can't do any worse," then it's up to him. And that's bluebird spirit right there, if I don't say different myself. Ryland...
Can we have Jake and Ryland?
Yeah, Jake, come on up.
Come on up.
Ryland, you come on up, too.
Ryland, you come up, too.
Ryland probably does the most difficult event in track and field, the pole vault. And it's also the most up-and-down event. At regionals, it, did it rain the entire time you pole vaulted? It rained the entire time he pole vaulted. So, it's, really was qualifying. Just get in, and we'll see what happens. And then the state meet, he came in at what, 12 feet? Came in at 12 feet. So, he's got to wait at least an hour while the other 20 competitors vault in front of him, seeing what they do, taking his time, mentally preparing. And he just took care of business that day. Was the first one to clear 13.6. I know it's in his heart that he wants to pass his dad for the school record, which is super cool that it's his dad who has it. And luckily for him, he's got two more years to try to do it. He's a sophomore, 13.6 as a sophomore, which is super fantastic. I don't think I've ever coached anybody who's gotten to go that high, which is awesome. And then we have another one right behind him who's following with him, both soph, going to be juniors. And, you know, I'm really proud of both these guys, and they did a wonderful job.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So, I have a, I have a couple of questions, too.
Yeah, those would be questions.
I know. So, so Ryland, what is that number? What is your dad's number that you have to hit?
I have to beat 13.7.
Oh.
Yeah.
The last inch is the easiest.
I know. Because the entire time when you were talking about how hard that event is, I thought, what would be hard for me is to pick it up and go, now, what am I going to do? And, you know?
And I have to ride with it?
Yeah, and the whole thing of talking yourself into doing that. So, I'm guessing your father had you doing that at like two, something like that, two or three?
It's a little hard.
Yes.
I think the hardest part is what goes up must come down.
Must come down, yes, yes. And Jake, I'm really proud of you. I know that you've had ups and downs and adversity and had to fight through a lot of things. And it's just awesome. And I always tell people, when I was a counselor at Highlands, that track people were some of my favorite people because it was just such an individual team sport, but the joy that you all have for each other is, it's just a wonderful sport. So, congratulations.
What was the time on the, that you ran?
400. 49.31.
You got that picture framed somewhere already?
Yes.
Yes.
Coach Leopold, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yay. Okay. And then the Cappys. Mr. Burgess, will you come up here and talk about your, we have a whole bag of t-shirt spray.
Yeah, we have a whole, there was this whole, like, power outage and trees and all of that. So, two, I have, I have two strong ones that are here. But yeah, we were very fortunate to receive 22 Cappys nominations for our spring production, Crazy for You. And also, that was our critic team as well getting a couple. The gala was almost two weeks ago on a Wednesday night, the last week of school. So, it was like, we're going into exams, and we're going to go to the Cappys as well. And we were very fortunate to walk away with seven awards. And of those awards, we won for best lighting. We won for best stage management, which John was our production stage manager for that. We won for comic actor in Connor DeFeveres, and won for best lead actor in Jameson Zoller, who played the lead. And then we also won best song and best musical overall. So, one of the cool things that I didn't realize until the next day, one of the parents and I were texting back and forth, is this senior class is leaving as the only people, they've won the best show of Cappys every year. So, as freshmen, as freshmen, they won best musical for Spelling Bee. As sophomores, they've won best play for Diary Van Frank. There was nothing last year, and then they won Crazy for You this year. So, I don't think that'll be duplicated, but pretty amazing. So, so yes, very, very proud of them and all of their hard work. I think it definitely should. So...
And best dancer, right?
And best dancer, Emmy Brewer, as well. I knew I forgot one. Yes, Emmy Brewer, who, yeah. So, GSA started yesterday, so we lost like seven that went to GSA. Emmy is at college orientation, and Jameson is over at CCM right now doing a musical theater camp. So, you know, they learn from somewhere to not stop. So...
And a couple of things that, if I could speak on behalf of Jason for just a second, the level of production, and we recognize the Cappys based on the nominations and a significant number of winners, but, but this really is the state championship of theater. And if you see the photos from the Aaronoff, and you see the different schools that are involved, to pull the best show in a category is a tremendous accomplishment for our school, our school community, our commitment to the arts, our commitment to theater. But really, the special sauce in this whole mix that you don't always get to see is that Jason has led a program that demands the students to take leadership roles. And so, students from a very early time have an opportunity to lead the stage management, to design the sets, to run the show. And that you don't necessarily see in the awards, but you get to experience for the rest of your life. And so, I thank you for, and commend you for your efforts.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I got to attend my first Cappys, and it was, I don't know what I was expecting, but if you've watched the award shows on TV, it was just like that. And if you think, you know, I was kind of going in thinking, you know, Highlands goes to the Cappys, they get a lot of Cappy nominations, they've won a lot in the past. And you think, well, these other schools probably are not as serious, but they are. I mean, you can see the competition, but you can also see they look at Highlands. And Highlands, they did the last musical number of the night, and it was, I mean, they just did outstanding. And I think then you kind of knew that they were going to win.
It was a good night.
For the best musical. So, you want to preview your shows in the fall?
Yeah. Next year, in the fall, we are doing, oh my gosh, I just totally blanked. We're doing Molière in the fall. So, anyone that loves 17th-century French comedy, that's for them. Tartuffe, that's it, Tartuffe. With the middle school, we're doing Cinderella. And then with the high school, we're doing Sweeney Todd. So, which the kids are very, very excited about, just a little bit. So...
Very cool. Congratulations.
So, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who are your representatives here tonight?
So, John, who won best, won, was the production stage manager, and so he won the stage management award, him and his team. And then Vell was one of the follies, so she's representing the musical.
Very good.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The other thing, Jason, is I'm so impressed with how the numbers grow every year of the kids who continue doing, you know, some kind of fine arts, some kind of performance, something in college. So, you know, they found their people, and they want to keep doing that. So, I love that. Congratulations. Okay, the next is the Tradition of Excellence Award. Are you going to do this?
Yes, yep. And love you guys to join in at the end, if you don't mind. Mr. Bradford, could you come up to the, up front, please?
I know. Sorry. I know, I know.
So, a very bittersweet recognition or award in some ways, but one that's definitely deserved. Mr. Bradford, Bill Bradford has served in Fort Thomas for five years, recently informed us that he has accepted a position in Fayette County Schools. He's going to be a chief of middle schools, close to family, and in a very, a large district that's very much aligned with some of, some of his dreams and future aspirations, humongous loss for us and personally to our leadership team. Couple of things to say about Mr. Bradford. I asked, I asked that he start to outline some of his responsibilities, and three pages later, Mr. Bradford is responsible for curriculum instruction councils, professional development, federal programs, pedagogical approaches, communication. But those three pages really don't, don't do any kind of justice for the, for the role that Mr. Bradford plays in this district. He's brought a spirit and a calmness and a leadership style that's really connected with, with a large number of our people. He's led us through multiple transitional changes in leadership. He's continuously supportive of our principals, our teachers and colleagues. When you speak to the teachers, their, their comments are genuine and heartfelt, and his work is appreciated. He's worked tirelessly to ensure that we are the best district for our kids, and that the community gets the best district in the state. He is driven by that. A quietly competitive guy, which, which I love about him. His colleagues' value is tact, his management of challenges, his deep concern for others, he's approachable, service-minded, and solution-oriented. And he's, he's one of the top two hardest workers I've, I've ever come across. He's forward-thinking, focused on continuous improvement. And personally, I've counted on him as a, as a co-leader of this district and a critical part of our executive leadership team. No challenge was too big. We trust him deeply. We love the wit and humor that comes. I don't know how many people in the audience notice it, but he'll usually say something during a presentation that you've got to be listening carefully to get, but it's usually pretty darn funny. We're going to miss him greatly. We wish him the best as he goes forward, but he is truly a part of why we have a Tradition of Excellence Award. So, thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Hey, come on up. You got to get a picture. But I would also add, as someone who works in regionally, in regional education circles, this is a loss for the region. You know, this, it'll be great for central Kentucky, but northern Kentucky will definitely miss the leadership, what you bring, how involved you've been in helping others, which is great for, has been great for our district to have a person from Fort Thomas kind of in the forefront and leading those things, and people so much respect you all across the area. So, we're going to miss you.
And I, we've talked before, but I know that it's like going home, too. So, I'm happy for you. Sad for us and happy for you, but that's, you know, that's how we should treat friends. So, congratulations and good luck. I think you'll do a great job. I think you will.
Yeah. And I know, I mean, you've done a lot in all, over the years, but I'll, and I, you know, it doesn't define you, but your work during the COVID years, I mean, we don't get through that without you. And, you know, we were so successful in getting back, getting back to school, and, and you took care of the people that were doing remote learning. And I, the work you did there, I know, I saw, you don't show stress, but I saw the stress. And you did an awesome job. And, you know, it really got us through there and got us to the point where we were ready to go and not behind. So, thank you.
All right. Okay. Then the next section is the community forum, and we have two speakers. Is this all that you had? Okay. Mrs. Ferris, you want to go first, since I had that one first?
Sure.
Okay.
My comments relate to the April 22 meeting of the Board of Ed. A parent spoke during the community forum and asked that guidelines be written and adopted regarding classroom discussions and the resources used during such discussions. Her appeal was made in an effort to be proactive rather than reactive, to safeguard against problems that could surface moving forward, before a problem takes root. Rather than playing catch-up after the problem surfaces, she was merely asking that more defined guidelines be put in place before that happens. Although the rules related to the community forum explain that the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board, a board member quickly began a dialogue with the parent. Comments included, "I suggest you stay off of some of those conspiracy sites," as well as, "I really don't believe we have porn in our schools." My message tonight is that almost exactly one year ago, when the infamous non-syllabus syllabus for the social equity class was leaked to the public, a large number of citizens showed up at the high school site-based decision-making council meeting to express their feelings one way or the other. The speakers were powerful, and the emotions were strong. The class was eventually tabled for the upcoming school year, but what surfaced during this site-based meeting put a spotlight on how perilously close we were to having exactly with the parent at this April meeting feared. I realized that one man's porn is another man's age-appropriate or age-inappropriate sexual discussion, but it caught my attention when a gal explained that she had to practice saying words out loud before repeating them at that meeting. The words she then uttered were vile, they were obscene, and they were required reading for all the students in those classes. She had never spoken those words out loud before. She had to practice them before she could say them. You dodged a bullet on this one when the class was tabled. Final note, after the high school site-based council election a week or two ago, a question was raised about a group of people endorsing specific candidates. I'm not here to debate that, but what I will note is that if endorsing a candidate is not permitted, neither should denouncing a candidate be permitted. During the April meeting, a board member asked if the parent speaking was running for an office. Once confirmed that she was, this member denounced the parents with the words, "I would be scared that you'd be elected." There's no need to name names. This board knows who used those words. Perhaps guidelines need to be written for a number of things. Thank you.
My comments tonight are directed towards leadership. We're, I know that we're all on the same page when it comes to safety and when it comes to success for our kids. It's my opinion that children do better with boundaries. I think when they know the rules and they know that rules will be enforced, it's, it goes smoother. They know what they can and can't do. The day after the shooting in Texas, I ran into an old friend when I was out walking my dog, and he served on this school board for many years. He said, "Fill me in on what's going on at school." He said, "I'm really out of touch. My kids are grown. My grandchildren are grown. They don't live around here anymore." So, we talked for a while, and then I told him that across the country, students are taking on the persona of an animal. And I said, "We have this at Highlands." And his eyes flew open. He said, "That is a red flag." You know, when he said that, it just kind of scared me. And I know that, that we're all on the same page with this. I know that. You all were elected, hired, chosen to set rules for our kids to succeed. Our kids are in an institution here to get an education. So, I just hope, I'm just asking, please be aware of red flags. I don't want us to have to make apologies, as we've seen across our country and other places.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. The action items, next section.
Should we tell our award winners if they want to go, they can go?
Oh, yes. If the award winners want to go, you may go. I'm sorry.
That's a real award.
That is. And it does, it looks like it's not raining. So, run, run. Jake will beat you out, but that's okay. He will win. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
They're very appreciative of that.
Okay, Jamie, are you talking about school fees?
I am. I have some back-to-school activities, discussions, even though we are only in June, we need to consider our 22-23 school year. And always in June, we look at our upcoming school year and our fees, so that it will allow us to have time within our systems to make sure that they are adequate and ready for purchasing for the following school year. So, as posted in the agenda, we do have some changes to include a variety of, across all schools, fees that will be increasing. One noted would be that there is a $15 fee per grade level. So, that would be K through 12. And that sole purpose would be to have that for technology. So, an added fee for that, and that would be in the line of technology. And then for our middle school and our high school, the leadership there did look and audit their programs with their department chairs and considered some different fee options. And so, those are reflected in the increases that are posted, which Peggy is showing tonight. So, I ask and recommend that you approve our fees for the 22-23 school year.
Okay.
Oh, you know, one thing I felt, I didn't go to the very left page, that would be our lunch, breakfast and lunch. Also, to consider our increased food prices, as the supply is, you know, always considering moving, as prices increase, we need to consider the cost for our students. So, looking at a 25 cent across the board for breakfast and lunch.
Okay. We had gone over these. Do you have questions at all? Okay. I appreciate your looking at that, and we had, we had had conversations, too, about, because things change, and, you know, what is, what is appropriate for, if different classes and that sort of thing. So, I appreciate it. So, if there are no other questions, then I need a motion for the approval of the school fees for the 22-23 school year.
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
For our next topic, it would be our KSBA policy updates. And for this evening, it will be an emergency reading, which is different than our previous process with this, which will allow us to only have a reading once for these. We know that these are only the policy updates from our legislative update. These are coming strictly from KSBA. And those that are included are time-sensitive with the stamp of July 1st. And so we need to make sure that we have that in place as we consider planning for our next school year. So I'm asking those included within the update to be considered as the emergency reading, the one reading only.
Okay. And we had gotten a list of them, and I know that they were late coming from the state this year.
Correct.
So of having to, that's why we're kind of, you know, having to do it this way.
And they actually recommended, when we received the literature from them, to process it this way, so that by July 1st, that we would be able to then have these enacted, and we would have our councils, who then would have to look further, or other parties, considering the language, we would have time to make those changes for the following school year.
Okay.
And the vast majority, these are coming from statutory changes?
Correct.
From the General Assembly, any federal changes that would occur? So they're, in essence, required policy changes from the board?
Correct. We really did not have any place to have any movement with them. And we went with the language from KSBA for these.
Right. Okay. Any questions at all? Okay. Then if there are not any questions, then I need a recommended motion for the adoption, I need a motion for the adoption of the proposed KSBA policy updates for 2323 as presented in the emergency reading.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Then the other policies are the traditional first readings.
Absolutely. Those are not included in our KSBA update. They are existing policies, but we're looking to change just some minor wording. The first one that I'll address is policy 3.175, and that is titled Retirement. All along, we recognize our district does allow our employees, bless you, to have the option to retire at any time of the school year, once an employee would consider that. However, there is our sick leave buyback option that is unique for some districts. And so we wanted to clarify the language that, to include that it must be that an employee must complete that academic year that they're retiring in. So if they were to retire, let's say in September, they would, technically, we would want to know that, and we'd want them to finish the school year. We'd rather them not retire in the middle of the year. If they do, obviously, they are allowed to, but they would not be eligible for their sick leave buyback. This is for the first reading. We will have a second reading, so this is not an emergency reading for this. All the other language in the policy remains the same.
Okay. Questions about that? Okay. I need a motion for-
Well, Peggy, I think has it all in one motion.
I have it all in one motion for both.
Oh, you do?
Ideally.
Okay, good.
Both listed on the separate link. The motion is-
One, okay, we'll do it. It's much more efficient, anyway.
Correct, yes. And so with graduation requirements, which is policy 8.113, we are looking at our current graduation requirements that are in existence and that we've approved, and we're matching the language actually from the school itself. So looking at Highlands and their practices within their handbook, their course catalog, we're making sure that our alignment is, we're cohesive together with what, it's not going to be any different than the practices that we're carrying out at the school level. We're just making sure that it's written in board policy as such.
Okay. Questions about that, too? And that, it's kind of a clerical, it's not changing any graduation requirements, it's the same.
Alignment.
Alignment, yeah. Alignment, okay. Okay, I need a motion for tentative approval based on a first reading for proposed changes to policy 03.175, retirement and policy 08113, graduation requirements.
So move, or I make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay. The next is revised 2022 board meeting dates. You going to talk about that?
Yep. So every January, we establish a schedule for board meetings, both regular board meetings as well as working board meetings that are held throughout the year. This is our last actual board meeting here and at the launch at 20 Grand. So it was an opportunity to not only, as we looked at new locations for our board meetings, but also to make sure that the rest of the dates that had been reviewed coincide with when we'll have board members here. And so for the vast majority of the dates, they remain the same, but there are a couple changes in the dates that we will conduct our regular meetings, as well as some time changes for the working board meetings. For the time being, from July through likely October, the location of our regular board meetings will be Moyer Elementary School in the library, very centrally located building, good parking, and an opportunity, I think, for everyone to attend who would like to attend. The rest of the year, we're looking for a different home, but we're not ready 100% to make a final determination of where those are, but those will be posted soon. So for the time being, we'll be at Moyer Elementary School, at least through October. One change in the date, originally, the July board meeting was going to be July 11th. There's some challenges with attendance, so it changes to July 18th. And these will all be reflected on the board website, once they're adopted. The October 17th date was the original October date. That will be moved to October 11th. Outside of that, the working board meetings are a couple of minor changes to times.
Why not ask a question?
It's up to the Board of Education, but typically, it would be at the conclusion of a meeting.
Yeah, at the conclusion, you may.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Did you finish that?
That's it.
Any questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion for approval of the revised board meeting dates for 2022.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Are you talking payroll dates, too?
I am, and there's probably an attachment here.
Oh.
Is it slow?
Each year, one of the, this is not something that is a change in practice over time, but each year, when we approach the new fiscal year, the Board of Education must approve our pay dates for all of our staff to get paid. And so we'll have an attachment up there. They're typically the 15th and 30th of each month, or the last Friday before that date, should those dates fall on a weekend. So we've attached for your consideration and approval.
Okay. Questions about that? Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the payroll dates for 2223.
I move to approve the payroll dates for 2223.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay, discussion items. We are going to do board committee updates. Does anybody have an update for a committee?
Uh-uh, not at this time.
Okay. I'm meeting tomorrow to start breakfast, opening day breakfast. I know we've only closed, what, hours ago, but I'm starting on that committee tomorrow, so we're meeting at 9:00, so we can order food, because goodness knows, we have to get those orders in quickly with, you know, how things are being delivered, yeah, with supply chain. So that's committee I'm working on, so you'll be fed. Okay, anything else to discuss? Okay. The approval of the consent agenda. Everybody had time to read everything? Okay. So I need a motion with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items outlined therein, approval of the consent agenda. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. And then the next part is other business. Do you have any other business at all?
I do not.
Okay. Then we will, we need to go into executive session.
Do you mind, sorry?
Go ahead.
Do you mind if we comment on what we're going in for and talk about what's on his?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the last meeting, we were able to go into executive session and as our requirement, do an annual review. Brian Bryan's been in here a year now, so. And this document, when it's all completed, will be posted, so you can go read it online. But I just thought, while we have an audience and we're on the TV, that we give a preview. And we're going to executive session, because we got to finish it tonight. But there were a couple of things to button up on. But Brian did receive an exemplary rating across the board on all items related to the review. So, and that includes strategic leadership, instructional leadership, cultural leadership, human resource leadership, managerial leadership, collaborative leadership, and influential leadership. So, and I thought I'd just read the section that we came up with as a board on the last sort of overall piece. But Brian accomplished the priority item for the district in 2021, stabilized the district while COVID and other outside issues are drawing attention away from education. He was able to establish trust inside and outside the buildings. In addition, he's created the groundwork to ensure FTEIS will be a destination district for teachers, staff and students. Challenges exist, including security of buildings, mental health concerns, legislative issues, and financial stress. Opportunities exist to be proactive to address those issues before significant impact on FTEIS. But I think generally, the board and the last meeting that we did, this main part of the review, all five of us were there, is that Brian has done an outstanding job over the last year, and we're very happy to have him on board. And he's done what we asked him to do and more, and I think, you know, sky's the limit.
Thank you. You know, it is a dream to come back home and to be able to work with the most talented group of educators that I know, and a tremendous board, a board that is focused on doing what's right for kids, doing what's right for our district. A board that doesn't always agree with every single perspective, but does agree with the need to coalesce around what it is that we do better, and a community that's second to none. So to have all of those ingredients with amazing teachers and students that come ready to go, it's just been a dream. So thank you all for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for what you've done. Okay. Anything else? Any other? Okay. Then I need a motion to go into executive session. So I need a motion for approval to enter our executive session at 7:12 per KRS 1565776C.
What she said, I will make a motion.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will go into executive session. Elizabeth, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yes, I do. The date for July, July 18th, conflicts directly with the city council meeting. So that would make three meetings out of, I believe, the vote. Do you need these in? This is four meetings in?
Yes.
Okay, so three out of the 12 meetings that are held. So that's one of the meetings where you have to rep, conflicts with the city council meetings, and I think we should try to avoid the conflicts at all costs. Because I'm getting in several other people who have been attending both meetings, trying to. So we could come up with a different date for July.
So for the most part, the conflicts that have happened have really been, that's through 4/8 and 6/10, the October and the-
I'm sorry.
You want to make your question? Do you want to make your question?
Yeah.
That date is the second Monday of school. Instead of going traditionally to the third Monday, which is what you're seeing in those meetings, we're going on a Tuesday. So we hear you, we're reconciling that issue. July, we can't impress that. So.
I'm sorry?
There's not enough people that can impress, or it'd be in July.
Do they have a quorum? Okay.